City council meeting to order if you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening and myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gearbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, Dillon, and Mayor Protam Tihar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Hart, city superintendent engineer Rubel, wastewater treatment superintendent Schall, Assessor Schall, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, DPW Director Fortes, as well as Attorney Curcio. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we would encourage you to sign in in the back, and there are also agendas available. There are going to be some changes to the agenda tonight. First, an email that was sent out earlier today regarding a resolution to further enhance public safety at schools serving the city of Celine is going to be removed. I spoke to Councilwoman Mitchell. We'll probably be making some slight modifications and then bringing that back in two weeks. I also believe that Councilwoman Dillon has requested that consent agenda IMC-18-73 be removed and added to new business. Is that correct, Councilwoman Dillon?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And then I was notified by the city manager that new business item 18-86 needs to be removed, and something tangible or at least something to discuss will come back at our next meeting on May the 7th. With that, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended unless there are additional changes.
Your honor?
Yes, Press, Mitchell.
Could we discuss at the end of the meeting a possible additional work meeting for our budget purposes next week?
Yeah, why don't we just bring that up under reports or other announcements?
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protam Tihar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Councilmember CEO is not with us this evening. Is there a motion to excuse his absence?
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tihar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries. We move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There are comments on agenda items. Please.
I would like to be present and represent the American Legion Auxiliary on 1871. If there would be any questions at that point, it is on the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? None then will proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Is there a motion now to approve the consent agenda as amended noting that C-18-73 has been removed and will be the first item for consideration under new business?
So moved.
As amended, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Nay on approving the consent agenda if still? I'm sorry. Okay, so that would have been five in favor, one opposed. Eyes have it, motion carries. We proceed now to public hearing, item 18-74. This is special land use to allow a commercial recreation business, Knocker Ball. This is a series of three motions. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:40 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open, and we invite the public to come to the podium and speak if they would like to make a comment or question regarding this action item.
Move to close?
Moved to close by McClellan at 7:41. And that was seconded by Gearbaugh. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The final motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 12, 2018 memo from the Celine Planning Commission and to approve or not to approve the special land use from sections 4.04-17B of the Celine City Zoning Ordinance to allow commercial recreation business at 1305 East Michigan Avenue, Celine, Michigan 48176.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any comment regarding this motion? And I believe we have, oh, there's the applicant. I saw the Knocker Balls in the lobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item was before the planning commission a week ago, and they reviewed it and approved it as was. There were no conditions assigned to it. It adds another recreational amusement-type venue in Celine that is currently not in our community and should draw a lot of interest and provide a service to the community, especially youth groups and other small groups that can either rent the Knocker Ball and use it outside or go to their proposed indoor facility at 1305 East Michigan Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. I know that at the last planning commission this past Wednesday, Mr. Gearbaugh had some questions regarding the special land use application process for this initiative. I know you sent an email. Did you get the clarification you were looking for, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, it appears that it may have gotten passed when the SNAP fitness went in that wasn't done with the appropriateness that it has done now. So, thank you for providing that.
You're welcome.
Very good. Would the applicant care to make a comment?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Carpenter owns a facility in Livonia, and his two sons have the Knocker Ball example.
They couldn't convince you to get in one?
This is actually the medium size or is it small, medium, large?
Good evening. My name is Jason Carpenter, and this is my family, my beautiful wife, Evo Carpenter, and this is Brady and my little guy, JJ. Thank you for having us. We are excited about the prospect of opening a business here in Celine. We're all Celine residents. My son goes to Harvest, Brady, and my youngest, Depoo Corner, here in town. So, we really believe in Celine and hope to invest here and bring a really great family activity to the community. It's great for exercise and keeps the kids off the video games. And it's been a great business for me and my family. My oldest and I work together a lot. He's got a nice little video on our website. We currently have an indoor field in Livonia, and we do, we bring these outside your house as well. It's a lot of fun. It's great for kids and adults. And we really appreciate you having us here today and hope you invite us in to open a business in your community.
Very good. Well, we appreciate your interest, and we're delighted to have you and your family with us this evening. And we are particularly pleased that the young men got to demonstrate the Knocker Balls for us. Good job, guys. Are there questions from the dais? Ms. Dillon, please.
It might be for Mr. Rubel. I just wanted to make sure that it was addressed to planning. Parking issues for that lot. I mean, with it being normally retail there as a zone, you know, that's sort of a quick turnaround parking you're talking about now. And, you know, quite a number of people, you know, 10 to 50, I think, was what you had mentioned for events at a time, like a two-hour block of time. Is that going to monopolize a big chunk of parking that will impact the retail businesses?
Well, I don't believe so. That end has several units, I believe, that are vacant yet. And the owner does have the ability to expand parking in the back. The site plan had actually a little excess of parking, excess parking in their site plan design per the parking ordinance when it was reviewed back in 1990s, I believe.
Because I know that Imagine provided a statement saying that they were very excited about this business. Was there any other feedback from any of the other tenants in that complex?
Well, when we send notices out, it goes to the property owner, and then he would dispense it to his leases if he, you know, so desired. And Mr. Glance obviously got noticed, so he did respond. No one else responded either way.
Okay. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the city. I just wanted to make sure there was just ample parking for everybody. Thank you.
Additional questions from the dais? Any comments? No comments? Thank you again so much. We appreciate it. We welcome you to Celine. We wish you the best of luck. Use us as a resource, anything we can do to help.
Thank you very much.
It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations again. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Yay!
We move on to new business item C-18-73. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 12, 2018 memo from City Attorney Smith and to schedule a public hearing for May 7, 2018 for the proposed 425 agreement with Pittsfield Township.
Move to acknowledge and to schedule.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tihar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? No discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Who had their hand up? Mayor Protam Tihar?
Yes, I had a question. This is on page three of eight at the bottom, item 3.2. The very last sentence, "Upon termination of this agreement, the property shall, for all purposes, will be within the legal limits and jurisdiction of the township." So, which termination is that? There are several kinds of termination, I think, in this paragraph, so I got a little confused.
Right. So, I think that you're referring to is actually a typo, is my understanding. I believe that the intent is for, if it were to last for its term, the 50 years, and it is typical for 425 agreement, it would come into the jurisdiction of the city at that point. So, that's something that we will take a look at the next draft and review with the township's attorney to make sure that we're on the same page with them at that point.
Okay, so that should...
So, you're a very good proofreader. Thank you.
Yes, she is. She's an excellent proofreader. And I would note, Mayor Protam, I would note for the record as well, Mayor Protam, I believe that is a typo. And all along, or at least my approach moving forward with any 425 agreement, is once it is brought into the city, if we reach, if we establish terms with a neighboring municipality to bring a parcel into the city, at the conclusion of the 50 years, it would stay in the city in perpetuity. I think that's the best approach, and that would be the one that I would follow in the future. Are there additional questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just the only thing with this one was understanding, it identified those four examples as a, you know, what would continue as the potential if we did not bring this property into the city if the development doesn't occur on it. It doesn't prevent those other four properties from being brought into the city at any point in time if they wanted to. They're islands, and that's my biggest worry, is I don't want to necessarily somehow give Pittsfield the advantage of saying, oh, we can keep these in perpetuity unless...
So, this agreement is intended with respect to properties A, B, C, and D. It just mirrors the terms of the resolution of 1981, so I don't believe it changes the status quo. It just changes the process a little bit to align more exactly with what state law now provides. As we've explained in some previous memos, when that resolution was done, there was no statutory process for this type of thing. There now is, it's the Act 425 agreement. So, it's basically just crossing i's and dotting t's, avoiding any challenges.
So, those four properties would be treated the same under a 1981 agreement, no matter what?
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion? None then will proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tihar, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-75. This is Rec Center Roof Project Pay Request Number Four. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 11, 2018 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve pay request number four from CIE in the amount of $20,281.1.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tihar. I'll get you on the next one. Councilwoman Mitchell. Director Scruggs, do you care to make a comment?
Unless you have questions, this is just another payment that we're making in the process. As I mentioned in the memo, we are still holding back over $125,000 for them to complete the project and kind of finalize everything. So...
Let me state for the record, I think I've made this mistake every single time I've made one of these motions. It's a little verbal tic I have, apparently. It's C-E-I.
C-E-I, yes.
So, excuse me. That's what's stated in the, stated on the agenda. It was my mistake for the mispronunciation. Are there questions for Director Scruggs? Any discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Thank you, Director Scruggs. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tihar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-76. This is community event application, Oakwood Cemetery Tours. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the application for community events by Ginger Winter on behalf of the Celine Rotary for Oakwood Cemetery Tours and to acknowledge receipt of the March 26, 2018 memo from Police Chief Hart, the March 19, 2018 email from Fire Chief Heft, the March 23, 2018 email from DPW Director Fortes, and to approve or not to approve the Oakwood Cemetery Tours event on Sunday, September 30, 2018. Rain date would be October 7, 2018, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, and to waive or not to waive any associated fees.
I'll move to acknowledge, acknowledge, approve, and not waive.
It's been moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge, acknowledge, approve, and not waive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Clerk Royal, do you want to take the lead on this, and then we'll invite the applicant to come forward and address the matter?
Well, this is the second year I believe that they have done this, so I will answer any questions if anybody has anything that...
Let's hear from the applicant or the petitioner first, and then if there are questions for either Ms. Winter or you, the chair would be delighted to entertain those. Ginger, we welcome you here this evening.
Okay, thank you. We are doing our third annual cemetery tour. We have a parking place already established at Annie's Day Care and also street parking. We are getting, we have researched already. I am doing dialogues. This will be 36 people buried in Oakwood Cemetery about their lives and learning the history of Celine. We have some very exciting people this time. One Confederate soldier, as well as two Union, and one Revolutionary War soldier, as well as many other interesting citizens that lived here in the 1800s. We are working on getting more people there. Last year was a little dip. We are doing more advertising this year, and we have room for a couple of actresses or actors. So, if anybody here would be interested, we would be happy for you to do that. It's only a three-minute dialogue in costume.
Very good. Thank you. Are there questions for either city staff or the applicant? Any discussion? Ms. Dillon?
Just quickly, there were no expenses incurred, correct, city expenses? Last year, they did pay for the Porta John. I don't think they're going to be using the Porta John this year, as far as I know. We have not requested.
Yeah, it's under, it could be or could not be depending on the situation.
So, if they did request, if that would be what we would build before it was the Porta John?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Ginger, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Then we'll proceed to vote on the motion. It's been moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge, to acknowledge, to approve, and not to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-77, community event application, Summerfest 5K. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the application for community event by Derek Stern on behalf of Celine High School Cross Country and to acknowledge receipt of the March 26, 2018 memo from Police Chief Hart, the March 15, 2018 email from Fire Chief Heft, the April 11, 2018 email from DPW Director Fortes, and to approve or not to approve the Summerfest 5K event and to waive or not to waive any associated fees. Is there a motion?
I'll move to acknowledge, acknowledge, approve, and because this is part of the Summerfest, to waive.
To waive. So, let me reread, Mr. Gearbaugh. You're acknowledging, acknowledging, approving, and waiving.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Again, Clerk Royal, I'll begin with you. Any comments?
This is a race, so no, I don't have much to say.
Well, I believe Derek is here. Hey, Derek, why don't you come up to the podium and give us, give council and the community a brief synopsis of this event. It is a great addition to Summerfest, and then we'll see if there are any questions from the dais.
Thank you. What we're proposing is to bring back the Summerfest 5K. It has traditionally been part of Summerfest. We did not have it last year, and prior to that, it had actually moved out to the middle school property. We would like to move it back downtown. We feel that the participation was better downtown. It obviously highlights our downtown area and brings people closer to the Summerfest activities as well for both before and after the race. So, our proposal would be to run a route that is through city streets and make it early in the morning so we're not inconveniencing anybody, have everybody off the route as early as possible, but also showcase the city as well.
Good. Derek, thank you very much. Questions for either the city clerk's office or for the applicant? Councilwoman Dillon?
I just wanted to clarify why we are willing to waive on this one and not waive on the previous one. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Because this one directly impacts economic development downtown because of the Summerfest, and we've supported that as part of our intent for the downtown, to bring people downtown, to identify it through our economic development teams. The cemetery doesn't necessarily do that, and besides, it's for a private organization that's fundraising as a result of this.
But I believe this is also fundraising.
We have done this in the past, where we waived this previously as part of the event.
Okay.
Questions for either a member of council or for staff or the applicant? Derek, again, appreciate your time. Appreciate your leadership on this. Thank you for being here this evening. Subsequent discussion on the motion. It has been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge, to acknowledge, to approve, and to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands, just one nay. Okay, eyes have it. That was a vote of five in favor, one against. Motion passes. We move on now to another community event. New business item 18-78, community event application, Taste of Celine. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the application for community event by Jill Durnan on behalf of Celine Main Street for the Taste of Celine and to acknowledge receipt of the April 10, 2018 memo from Police Chief Hart, the April 5, 2018 email from Fire Chief Heft, and the April 11, 2018 email from DPW Director Fortes, and to approve or not to approve the Taste of Celine event and to waive or not to waive any associated fees.
Move to acknowledge, acknowledge, and to approve and to waive.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protam Tihar. It's been moved by Mayor Protam Tihar to acknowledge, to acknowledge, to approve, and to waive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded again by Councilwoman McClellan. I don't see Jill here in the audience. Ms. Ragland, are you taking the lead on this? We would welcome you to the podium.
And also Melissa Phillips.
Melissa, you're also welcome to join Karen at the podium. Before I relinquish the floor, Ms. Ragland, do you have any comments? No? Karen, the floor is yours. My apologies.
So, thank you for having me here this evening and reviewing the application. This year, we've decided to change Taste of Celine. It hasn't been totally successful for both the businesses and our guests. So, we're changing the format so it's more of a block party. So, our goal is to close the south side of the street and sort of have a tent, tent party, if you will, in the middle of the streets by our local downtown restaurants. All restaurants are participating. We're going to also include our downtown merchants, more like a sidewalk sale. And all the proceeds from the day's sales for restaurants, 50% is going to Main Street, and the restaurants will keep the other. So, it's not out of, you know, giving to the community all out of their pocket. So, that will be a win-win for both. The event will be a kickoff to Restaurant Week, which we haven't had in this town. So, we're pretty excited about having a new addition.
That's great. Terrific. Questions for either the city clerk or the applicant? Ms. McClellan?
Not a question, but just a comment that we're hoping to also have the kickoff or the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Celine Student Art banners that same day.
Yay!
Hopefully, if they're up by that.
But I don't know that I said this, but we're changing the name, by the way. It will not be Taste of Celine any longer. It will be Eats and Beats.
Eats and Beats. Very good.
Cool.
And we've secured Jake Kershaw.
Well, it sounds like a really exciting event, and it will be a great time to come downtown. A lot of stuff happening downtown on one occasion. That's terrific. Mayor Protam Tihar?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned Restaurant Week. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes. So, you know, we pretty much have, I'm going to say, five anchor restaurants downtown, our big ones. And so, we've been meeting with them probably every other week to discuss what is possible. What they have settled on is to come up with fixed pricing, so a $15 meal and a $28 meal. Don't hold any of that. Slight possibility they could change that. But the idea is, is not to create competition among the other on pricing, but to have everyone come down and then choose where they want to eat. The Restaurant Week will be from Monday through Thursday. So, this, and Sunday afternoon, we're closed, it's from 2:00 to 5:00. So, we're hoping that some of our guests will stay and have dinner when they, you know, enjoyed something, and then come back through the week.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Karen, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Then it's been properly moved by Tihar, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge, to acknowledge, to approve, and to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Ladies, thank you again. Have a good evening. We move on now to new business item 18-79. This is MERS Healthcare Savings Program Amendments. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 12, 2018 memo from City Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve the amendments to MERS Healthcare Savings Program as submitted.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gearbaugh. Ms. Bennett, do you care to go over your comment of April 12?
If there are questions, I will answer them.
Okay. Memo's pretty straightforward. Are there questions for the city treasurer? Any discussion on, oh, yes, there is a question.
I do.
Yep.
Can you just explain your memo?
(laughing)
Simple question. I just want to make sure, I think I understand what it's saying, but I just want to make sure that I've read it the correct way.
Okay, so, we have the, we have a, we currently have healthcare savings plans, a program through MERS for our non-Union, non-staff employees, our Teamsters employees, and our police department employees. It was brought to our attention that some of the language needed to be clarified to keep it within the IRS regulations. At this time, we have been able to do the administrative staff because there's no bargaining unit language that needs to be changed. And so, the table on there are those changes for those groups. The Teamsters have got, there'll still be language that needs to be changed, but they've agreed on some, and they're just tweaking. And the police department is working on the language clarification. Is there something specifically?
I guess, why were some a percentage and some a dollar amount?
Because while this is a mandatory deduction by IRS rules, that means that anyone that is in that group has to have the same amount taken out. So, that's why there's so many groups. We, as the administrative staff, feel that this is a good benefit for those employees, especially those employees who will not be retiring with healthcare benefits, which are all of our new hires, that this plan will let them put away pre-tax dollars for medical expenses when they depart with the city. They don't necessarily have to retire. They can leave and use pre-tax dollars. So, some of them, but that is a decision that that group can make. And, but that deduction stays mandatory, meaning anyone that falls within that group has to have that dollar amount taken out. Some of us agree to a percentage so that it can continue to grow as our salaries grow, and some want it a flat rate. So, that's why they're, it's their decision to do.
Okay, that's what I just, thank you very much.
And then the 0%, the language does require to for any payouts upon termination of the city, and no one, all groups have decided not to have anything go to that. That's why that's all zeros on that column.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dillon, additional questions for Treasurer Bennett? Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Councilwoman Mitchell, seconded by Councilman Gearbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. We move on to new business item 18-80, resolution in support of reinstatement of historic, a state historic tax credit, Senate Bill 469, House Bill 5178. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 5, 2018 memo from the Historic District Commission and to approve or not to approve a joint resolution with the Celine Historic District Commission in support of reinstatement of state historic tax credit, Senate Bill 469, House Bill 5178.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan. Mr. Fortes, do you care to make any comment? Then I would welcome additional thoughts from Councilwoman Mitchell, who serves as our liaison to the Historic District Commission.
Yeah. Just real quick, this is a tax credit that used to be part of the Michigan Tax Code and was removed, I think, in 2011. And the Michigan Historic Preservation Network and some other groups did a lot of research on the economic impact of the first several years when the tax credit was in effect. And they found that for every dollar of tax credit, there was $11 of economic activity generated. So, seemed to be a very good return on investment. In the packet of information there, there's a frequently asked questions that was prepared by MHPN. You have the legislative summary. that was prepared by MHBN. You have the legislative summary and, you know, the full language of the two bills if you really want to get into the nitty-gritty there. But that's it in a nutshell. Tax credit that has a pretty solid history of effectiveness in generating economic activity. And the HDC passed this resolution and thought that it would carry more weight if it was passed as a joint resolution between the Historic District Commission and the city council.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell, anything you'd like to add?
I would just like to add that this was enthusiastically supported by the entire commission. The thinking is, is that investment in historic preservation is not only a cultural investment, but it is an investment in the whole well-being of our town. There are buildings in our town that are on the National Historic Register. And as we work to save these buildings and even some trees, this is something that's going to encourage homeowners to continue to preserve history for us all.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your work on this and your, and the work that your colleagues on the HDC invested in this initiative as well. Are there questions for either Councilwoman Mitchell or for Mr. Fordice? Let me begin with the mover of the motion, Mr. Gearbaugh, and then I'll jump to you, Mayor Protem Tarr.
Not a question for her, but more of a statement. I support this because I think this was a short-sightedness by our state legislature when they allowed this to go away. They gave tax credits to a lot of operations and that probably, I think, many would agree that shouldn't have got it. And this is the type of thing that helps preserve homes, helps preserve the economy, and grows the economy. So, I'm hoping that this does go forward, that we do get this to become law.
Very good. Mayor Protem Tarr?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to say I agree completely with Mr. Gearbaugh, and I'm very pleased that the Historic Preservation Network put forth the effort to move this forward. Do we know how many other cities might be doing similar resolutions and actions, number one? And number two, how the network will use the resolutions to leverage support?
I do not know how many other communities are actively pursuing this support of the two bills. I know the network is doing a good effort at publicizing that these, that this process is taking place in the legislature. And the Senate bill did pass. So, I can't specifically answer that. I don't know how many, how many communities. But I, we would send this resolution to our representative and, you know, copy the Preservation Network.
Okay. Thank you. You've anticipated my suggestion.
Additional questions or comments? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Actually, hang tight because you're up next for new business item 18-81. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on now to new business item 18-81. This is a resolution in support of bridge maintenance grant, preventative maintenance grant, excuse me. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 11th, 2018 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the resolution in support of bridge preventative maintenance grant applications for Woodland Drive, Celine Waterworks Road, and Monroe Street Bridges.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tarr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'm Ms., Councilwoman Dillon on the last one, so I'll let her take that one, Mr. Gearbaugh. We'll get you, we'll get you on one of the upcoming motions. Do you want to give a recent synopsis of your memo, Mr. Fordice, of April 11?
Yes. So, this is our third attempt at securing funding through the unusually-named state, federal, local bridge program. The first two attempts were for rehabilitation money, which is a little bit more competitive. And our candidate bridge for it, while I believe the work we were proposing was appropriate, was perhaps a little too proactive for the rehabilitation grant program. So, after not getting funding through that mechanism twice, we reconfigured our scope of work and included the two other city-owned bridges in it to fit within the preventive maintenance category of funding, which is somewhat less competitive. And I think the state will feel our projects are, you know, more fitting of funding within that category. So, this would address all three city-owned bridges, Monroe Street, Celine Waterworks Road, and Woodland Drive, a variety of different scope of work items. Both Woodland and Celine Waterworks, pretty light preventive maintenance work there. Monroe Street would see, receive a heavier treatment. And just as an aside, there's been a lot of commentary about the stretch of road south of the Monroe Street Bridge. One of the reasons that's in fairly tough shape is we were trying to hold off until we had a bridge project because the original rehabilitation scope and the preventive maintenance scope involve the approaches to the bridge. And we were trying to wrap that into one.
And I know that the Monroe Street Bridge specifically is an item that you'll address when we reconvene to discuss our upcoming budget. Because I think you have some ideas and, more importantly, some dollars to improve that.
Actually, that might, that might be getting addressed tonight.
It is.
Yeah. And the D.N. Higgins contract.
Excuse me. Yes, it is. And that's a, I got confused there because I believe that's, Mr. Ruble's taking the lead on that and not your office.
Right, right.
So, we're like three weeks ahead of schedule already. Very good. A quick question for, because of course, all of us here regarding the Monroe Street Bridge. I've gotten several inquiries and complaints about that, the stretch as you enter Northview subdivision. And I guess this is a broader question. But when we apply for state or federal grants, do we ever reach out to our elected officials to solicit letters of support? In my experience, that can often provide some additional leverage that may make our application a little bit more compelling.
So, most of our federal funding is kind of formulaic. You know, we have so many miles of federally eligible roads, and the, our area transportation group, WOTS, the Washington Area Transportation Study, they sort of manage the distribution of those funds. So, it's not necessarily a competitive process, that funding. And that's our primary non-state funding mechanism.
Okay. So, you don't think that a letter for, from any of our elected officials would make particularly useful?
Not, not to the best of my knowledge, but it's certainly something to investigate and look at.
Okay. I'm just very eager to get these resolved.
Give you free money.
So, I'm just trying to brainstorm.
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Fordice? Ms. Dillon?
Can you just clarify, what is the difference between rehabilitation and preventive maintenance?
So, in rehabilitation, you get into the actual structural components of the bridge. And in preventive maintenance, you're more, you don't, you don't really touch the structural elements. You try to protect them and make them last longer. So, that's basically the difference between those two categories. So, in rehabilitation, you're replacing a structural component. In preventive maintenance, you're preserving structural components.
Do any of our bridges need structural rehabilitation? And are we going to be masking that by preventive maintenance?
Not, no, not masking. We will extend the life of the components with the preventive maintenance work. The reason I went for rehabilitation on the Monroe Street Bridge was because while it's still structurally sound, it's, it is aging, and it's getting closer to the point where we would have to put a load limit on it. And I was trying to avoid that by doing a structural rehabilitation of it. I don't know that the preventive maintenance project will prevent a load rating down the road, but it would push it off for at least probably in the 10-year range.
Okay. That was my next question. So, this is just sort of a window to buy us a little bit of time? And how much time? You're saying 10 years?
I, well, I think 10 years before we would need to do a load rating on it if we do this preventive maintenance work.
Okay.
And then with a low grading, you know, there's probably another 10 to 20 years of life before we're looking at a, like a full deck replacement.
So, then, once we do this, we take rehabilitation off the table? We're not going to pursue that at this point in any means?
It would, it would be, yeah, it would be a number of years before we would go after rehabilitation at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Fordice? Ms. Gearbaugh?
When you mentioned load limit, that reminded me. I was reading an article about Celine Township and their concerns about York Township having redirected their truck routes and so forth, and additional wear and tear that's happening on theirs. Is Monroe Street a truck route? Or do we have weight limits on that street?
There are no weight limits on that street, so it is open to trucking. The, the bridge is not rated for oversized loads. So, any regular legal load can pass that bridge.
Okay. So, that might be another angle that we could go at. Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. Well, it's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by Dillon, thank you, Mr. Fordice, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-82. This is Swisher Commercial Realty Agreement Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 11th, 2018 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the request to renew the Swisher Commercial Realty Agreement for another 12 months.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Ms. McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a brief comment regarding your memo of April 11? Then we'll have Mr. Caparisi make a comment.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you all may recall, Swisher Commercial Realty, specifically Tony Caparisi, has been representing a number of the city properties, commercial and industrial properties, such as the properties that were sold for Zippies and the Hotel/Hardware, as well as 600 Maple, where the residential development that is currently in the middle of construction. And so, we do have some other properties that are still available. And staff would recommend going forward and extending it. Mr. Caparisi, I know we provided a status report, but I think Mr. Caparisi would be happy to come and present that to the, to the council as well for the, for the betterment of the public.
Absolutely. Tony, why don't you come forward and, you know, to elaborate on what Mr. Campbell said. We greatly appreciate your efforts and your time and your energies to help us finalize deals that resulted in the sale of property to Zippies Car Wash, Avuteek Hotel, Free Standing Ace Hardware, and of course, 600 Maple, the Maple Oaks Project, which will be a marvelous addition to the community. So, thank you for your work on that. And perhaps you can comment for the council's benefit as well as the public's benefit as to ongoing efforts to sell and redevelop those outstanding parcels that Mr. Campbell referenced.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I guess time goes by pretty quickly. This is, wraps up four years since I first came before council and was proposing a listing agreement with Swisher Commercial for the city-owned commercial, at the time, industrial properties. Last year, I reported that a number of deals were underway and getting close to being finalized. And this past year has been, was extremely productive. And there's nothing more gratifying from my standpoint, from a commercial broker's standpoint, after getting involved in any kind of land development deal, which typically takes quite a bit of extended time and efforts than to actually see a closing and ground being broken. And we have three successful closings this past year that culminated over just about two years of efforts between city staff, city legal counsel, myself, and a number of others representing the buyer sides of these agreements. Each, each development, I think, will absolutely bring new economic development opportunities, as well as first-in-class type of facilities with the new Best Western Premium Hotel. And the Maple Oaks Project, I think, is going to be something that's really going to benefit our community and most likely get a lot of recognition from those outside the community once people start to learn what that development and housing development is all about. So, what's next? We still have four industrial zone properties that have been listed and continue to be listed and available. We have one remaining Michigan Avenue property, Lot 28. We started out with lots 18, 19, and 20. They were reclassified about a year and a half, two years ago, by city council rezoning those properties from light industrial to SPA zoning one, which essentially is whatever the city would choose them to be. And really, that opened the door for a lot of potential development. Really brought forward a number of local individuals who had the vision and the wherewithal to bring about some development proposals and actually brought them to fruition with the hotel group, of course, Zippies Car Wash, and the Maple Oaks Project. So, to date, I'm looking forward to really completing the Michigan Avenue sites. There has been interest, there is interest. And, but as usual, these things take a while to further develop. I've currently been in conversations with a developer and potentially a few different end-users who might be able to work conjunctively with that developer to develop that remaining six and a half acres. Once that's completed, all, all three of those parcels will be connected in kind of a planned unit development fashion, although they won't be actual planned unit developments. But the, all of the, the streetscapes and landscaping and so forth, and the, the joint driveway accesses will all be connected and will appear as one, one functional unit. The remaining industrial lots, I'm not as optimistic at this time. We have seen some end-user development taking place with owner-user type of industrial property development. Not much, but some. Virtually no speculative type of industrial development projects are underway. And a couple of the lots have some geographic or some environmental type of challenges with wetlands and easements and setbacks and so forth. But I think probably at this point, the most marketable of the properties will be the Lot 5 at the end of Taft Street, excuse me, not Taft, but Teft Court, and Lot 13 at the end of Beach Court. I think probably the two woodland lots, again, are nice lots. Again, they, they offer kind of a minimal building envelope, some wetland challenges. That will continue to be a challenge. So, again, we'll continue to market those. We have talked to people in the past, and I'm sure they'll continue to get visibility through all of our marketing vehicles with online marketing signage and so forth. So, with that, I look forward to hopefully having another opportunity for another year to come and see if we can't continue to bring some more successes.
Very good. Tony, thank you very much. Are there questions for either city staff or for Mr. Caparisi? Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I assume that the commission is still the same on the Michigan Avenue property as it has been? You know, it's a more marketable piece of property?
Right. So, as I recall, so if it's, if there's two realtors, one from the developer, one from the city, it's a 10% commission that they would split. If Mr. Caparisi were the sole realtor agent involved, it would be an 8%.
Correct. Yeah. So, the Maple Street, or the Maple Project and the Zippies Project were both at the 8% commission rate. The hotel project was at the 10% rate with the outside broker involved.
Okay.
That was, that was one of the original listing contract agreements. So, that wasn't a change with the way it was in the beginning.
That was unfortunate for the city that we probably should have renegotiated because of that property being more saleable, but...
Yeah. You know, you know, after you work for four years on something, that's, a broker always likes to renegotiate their commission levels.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Any discussion on the motion? Tony, thanks again. Appreciate your efforts. If there's nothing else, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Tony, have a good evening. We move on to two related items. First up is 18-83, wastewater treatment plant odor control improvement award. This is an exciting additional step we'll be able to take this evening to mitigate noxious odors permeating from our wastewater treatment plant. The first motion is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 6, 2018 letter from Brian Ruble of Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the contract to EL Construction Group for wastewater treatment plant odor control improvements in the amount of $3,275,348 pending satisfactory review from the state of Michigan.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and award.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second? I'll second. Mr. Skoll, do you want to begin with the assistance of Mr. Brown? Mr. Skoll, do you want to begin with the assistance of Mr. Brian Rubel?
I believe... I believe it's best if you just... Oh, sorry. If we just have Brian describe what's going on in the proposal since they wrote it, these things are a little bit, they're not really my forte on here, so... But I'll be here for questions.
Very good, okay. Mr. Rubel, please.
Well, good evening. I, the letter summarizes the bidding process. We actually summarized some of that last week when we talked, so I, I wasn't planning on going through the dollar values of the bid, but certainly could entertain questions on that. The low bidder was E.N.L. Construction Group out of Flint. Tetra Tech has worked with E.N.L. before. You may be familiar with the project. It is the water tank in Ann Arbor near the intersection of Washington and Stadium. The one that was painted two summers ago with birds on it. E.N.L. did not do the painting, but they did site work, mechanical work, electrical work on that tank. That was a Tetra Tech project, so we have worked with E.N.L. I've talked to them, they're confident in their bid, that they accounted for everything. They did, they do have a history of getting the work done, and getting it done in, in a good condition. I, I, you know, they're not the, my, my favorite contractor to work with, but they're not my least favorite either. Their contractors are challenging, but they have completed the work satisfactorily. I called some other references as well, and I, and I think I got the same opinion from the other references, that all the projects were completed successfully. And construction projects aren't always easy, so I heard that, that, you know, you have to work with them, but you'll get it done. Other things in this award. We did break out the price of the sock trail generator, just in case perhaps something like happened, happened with the cost. In case the costs were high and the city wanted to reevaluate that or push that into a different fund of money. So there was, there was a, a breakout of that from the bid. The total that is quoted in the letter is with the generator. So if, if you wish to take that out of E.N.L.'s contract, you would subtract about seventy-five thousand dollars. It was the cost. We think the seventy-five thousand dollars is a fair price for that generator, by a reputable company. The only other thing I would like to summarize is we did have a discussion in February about whether to have the contractor start the project ahead of the loan closing. The loan closing is scheduled for June twenty-second. So you could have the contractor start the project, you know, probably within two weeks or so by the time we get insurance and bonds in place. I, I do not believe much cost would incur prior to that. It, it takes time for them to get orders in and so forth. I'm not saying it'd be zero cost, but I don't think it would be a, a large sum of money. So I, I would think we would want that direction, if not tonight, very soon, so...
Well, let's, let's stick on that point for just a moment, because I have a hunch, Brian, I can speak for everyone at the dais, which is Tetra Tech working with city staff, in particular with the wastewater treatment plant. If you can be thorough and make sure that we are prepared to act, I, I don't think there would be any objection to expediting this project and beginning sooner as opposed to later.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't believe there's a risk from thoroughness standpoint from starting early, so...
If, if that changes and you identify a significant risk, please let us know.
Absolutely.
But assuming that your statements are correct, I think we want to, obviously, we want to be thorough and want to get this done and get it done right. But we also want to expedite it because it has an impact on the quality of life of, of owners of adjacent properties. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, just note, I mean, as the, where the currently, the agreement is written, the risk would be if for some unknown happen, again, conservative evaluation here, is that if for some reason the loan did not close for the, the bond, the sale of bonds, the city would be responsible for the, the full amount. I mean, we don't think that there's much chance of that, but I, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yeah, we've talked about that on numerous occasions in the past. Just, I want to confirm for the record, because that's, that is an interesting point. The likelihood of us not receiving the funding that we request is, is pretty minimal.
I, I believe that from my conversations with the DEQ, that is correct.
Mr. Gereb?
Just a question, clarify. So if the loan doesn't close with the DEQ or the state, whatever, we still have the option to look to, to issue bonds ourselves, correct?
Yes, we would have, right, we would have to, we would have to go through the... My understanding is we would have to go through the forty-five day referendum period, you know, notice, you know, to, to do that, but then, yes, we, yes, we could do that.
So potentially, we're just reserving a portion of our fund balance until we can get those, those... Okay, that's what I want to clarify. One other question, and this is more for Mr. Campbell. Does it matter this, if we decide to pay for the, because Mickey Joe had mentioned about using the other funds for that seventy-five thousand dollars for that generator? Does it matter that it's in this? Can't we just transfer the funds to cover that cost?
Well, that becomes, right, the question that we asked at the special, special meeting, right, was, did you want to just include it in the full amount and make, increase, increase the amount of, of debt to issue? Or did you want to reduce that by, you know, the seventy-five thousand and the, I think it's one hundred and twenty-three thousand? I think some of those are the two, the two numbers outside of the actual odor abatement project. So we, we could, we could use cash from the LDFA and TIF.
But that has no bearing on this contract. I'm saying we don't need to break out the seventy-five thousand at this point, because in the memo, it indicates either you do it with or without it. But does that really matter in terms of where we decide to finally fund it from?
I was, that's my understanding.
You want to confirm?
Yeah, yes, we would, I, I guess it's, it's two separate questions, I think. We, we do need to award the contract to E.N.L., and, and all E.N.L. cares about is whether the generator's in or out. There are forms due to DEQ very soon. Roger mentioned the twentieth. I thought it was a couple days after that, but within a week or so, we have to tell the DEQ what the dollar value is we wish to borrow.
So we would potentially take out, excuse me for interrupting, a one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar figure and then approximately seventy-five for a generator? Is that right?
Seventy-five for the generator is correct. Is it one sixty-five?
Yeah, I think it's...
I'd have to look it up. It's over in my notes here.
But the thought is, it doesn't, we should go for the most. But at some point, can we change our minds and take the funds and not worry about it? Because all I'm worried about is let's get this contract out the door with everything that we're talking about. And so it's a question of how we're going to fund it.
I think between you and Roger, if we took those dollars of amounts out, we would need to do that very soon.
That's my understanding.
That is correct. Yes, we, council needs to make that decision prior to the twentieth of how you want it. I believe that's what Roger had advised at the special meeting.
So otherwise, we'd be sitting with a two hundred and thirty thousand dollars we'd be sitting on to use for... We just wouldn't use it if we decided to fund it from somewhere else. There's no way to get out of only just borrowing three point one million or whatever it is, so, got it?
Yeah, yes, you could take that out, but you'd have to make that decision now.
Now.
Correct.
Those are good, we all, there were some good points brought up there. Did you have any additional comments?
I believe I'm finished.
You're finished, okay. Are there questions for Mr. Rubel or for Mr. Skoll? Ms. Mitchell, let's start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Rubel, appreciate this. I'm, I'm kind of going back to our rec center, and we had some issues with a company doing construction and design that had not done this before. So we have the design part down, but how is, so E.N.L., have they done this specific type of work before?
They have done many water and wastewater projects that I would say involve all the same components. I, I answer that, and I want to deviate from it for a second. Their subcontractor for the mechanical portion, which would actually be setting the odor control units, is a mechanical, they call a mechanical subcontractor. And that's named, their name is Platinum, they're also in Flint. They did do at least one biological odor scrubber that I was able to find. So they have done one, I got a good reference from that work. Now to deviate from your question a little bit. I really believe the key to the project is not in the contractor in this case, because these are fairly common types of things they're doing. I believe it's in the manufacturer of the odor control equipment. I think that's where the expertise is that we're really concerned about. And we got a very good supplier bid. It's somebody Webster thinks very highly of. It's actually somebody that Tetra Tech also specifies on projects. So both companies feel good about the supplier that was bid.
Let me jump to Mrs. Dylan, Mr. Gereb, because I think she had her hand up for a question, then I'll come back to you.
I did, and pretty much, I think Ms. Mitchell just asked the question I have. I just, what is, I guess I'll piggyback to it, which is what is your level of comfort with E.N.L.? Because you're just sort of like a little lukewarm with them right now. I mean, are you confident?
My, my confidence is not in the quality of their work. They're just a, a little, it's going to take a little effort to work with them, make sure you get what, what you need to get. And, you know, there's always change orders on projects, we talked about that in February. My experience with them is it's going to take quite a bit of my time, which is all budgeted, to make sure if a change order comes up, you get a reasonable price for that.
Okay. That makes me even more nervous, I'll be honest with you right now. The answer, it wasn't as reassuring as I was hoping for. I guess what I'm concerned with are delays. That's going to be, you know, are, are we, are we going to have delays as a result of their level of difficultness?
I'm sorry, are we going to have a...
Delays.
Delays.
I know it's sort of a, it's, it's a question that's sort of out in space.
They were not concerned when I talked to them about the schedule and made it important, made it very clear to them how important it was to meet the schedule. They did not express any concern to me about that.
Do we have clauses for deadlines?
You do. You have a couple of deadlines they have to hit.
Okay.
Or there's monetary damages assessed.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Let me jump to Mr. Gereb and Ms. McClellan.
Just real quick, when you mentioned, you know, you're okay with the supplier and all that, where we've always run into the problem is we get the specialized equipment, and then the contractor hires day, basically, day labor to install it. What guarantees do we have in that they're required to use authorized installation individuals?
There's probably fifteen to twenty days that that specification requires the manufacturer to be onsite supervising that equipment. How it started, how it's checked out, and the performance of it. So there's an extensive amount of time they are required to be here with their eyes on their equipment.
So it's as a result of the manufacturer, not the, our contractor?
The, the manufacturer needs to be onsite. That should be included in his bid to be there and check out his equipment.
And then our oversight of that will be the individual that we hire to oversee everything.
There will, then you'll have a third party that's, that's onsite, that's correct.
We're, we're going to do it twice, if not three times, thank you.
Ms. McClellan.
Do you see any issues, I mean, with your hesitation in, in the contractor with the steel prices and them trying to regain some of the lost income from other parts of the project with the steel prices being with there?
We, we will have to keep an eye on that. They, they bid it, they, they assumed the risk of the pricing at the time they submitted the bid. And if there is a change, we're going to, we're going to scrutinize it. And they should only pay what the current market is for that change.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll keep, well, whoever you hire, right? We'll keep an eye on it.
Okay.
Well, Brian, I, I, I feel good about this, because you and I have had conversations, I've had conversations with, with my colleagues on staff here. And the approach and standard that we're going to use for this project mirrors in many ways what we recently did with the rec center roof, which is really robust oversight in ensuring that accountability exists, especially with a project of this magnitude that comes with a significant cost over three point two million dollars and, you know, has the potential to resolve some longstanding issues that have a direct bearing on, on our citizens' quality of life. So appreciate your work on this and appreciate you taking the time this evening to address some of our questions and concerns. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Bunch of hang tight, because we got you up next. Then we will proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by Marl, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and to award. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the second motion, which is eighteen dash eighty-four. This is wastewater treatment plant odor control project engineering services during construction. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April eleventh, twenty eighteen memo from Brian Rubel of Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the proposed Tetra Tech, to approve, to approve the proposal from Tetra Tech, excuse me, for construction services for the wastewater treatment odor control project in the amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And to authorize or not authorize, City Manager Campbell assigned the proposal upon review and approval by the city attorney. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge, to approve, and to authorize.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Mr. Rubel, again, would you care to give a brief synopsis of your memo of April the eleventh?
I'll, I'll be very brief. So this would be, this proposal is for the engineering services during construction, the administrative type work to work with the contractor to make sure that they construct the project that has been designed and envisioned. You know, three major tasks, I guess, that I have in here. One, one is just construction administration. This is progress meetings, reviewing submittals by the contractor, reviewing their pay application to make sure that that's accurate, answering questions that are not clear, those sorts of things. Webster will be a, will continue their role to, to us and to you to do the odor control equipment portion of that. The second part is construction observation, and that is essentially daily visits to the plant to, while construction is going on, to observe it, you know, before the contractor leaves and make sure that they are constructing it properly. The last item very, and that's, it's a very nominal portion, is I did include a handful of time to assist with any public engagement type activities. We talked about newsletters to the public, other sorts of communication that you will need, and, and we can help with that. I did provide two levels of oversight. The first level, I believe, is, is more than adequate to observe the work in a thorough manner. It will involve daily visits to the site. Our office is just four or five miles away, so it's very efficient for us to do that every day as part of a circuit and, and then move on. And there's many days during construction that not a lot happens. Where concrete's curing, or they're unloading a truck or, or something. And this project is, is well-suited to that, because almost all of it's above ground, and it's not buried. So we can come at any time and see what they did the last twenty-four hours or so. We don't actually have to see every bolt be, be tightened. I did provide a, at your request from our February meeting, a, a more intensive, full-time, every-minute type of service during construction. I don't see a, a big jump of value between those two. But certainly, I, I heard from you how important that was to at least consider that, and therefore I presented that.
But we appreciate that, you, you providing that. But again, just so that there's no ambiguity for the record, it's your professional recommendation that option one is, is appropriate and sufficient?
Yes, it is.
Anything further, Mr. Rubel?
The only thing I will say is I am not certain how your accounting works. I saw that the resolution was for three twenty-five, and I did write that I, I think on its, on its face, that service would be three twenty-five, but I, I'm pleased to report that we're quite a bit under budget for the design and bidding phase. So as far as my books care, it could be a two seventy-five resolution, and, and my, my books would be good with that, so...
Good, appreciate you noting that. Questions for Mr. Rubel? Ms. Dylan?
Just under the assumptions part with Webster's fifty-eight thousand, and then there's a thirty thousand dollar testing allowance, are those built into that three twenty-five?
They are.
They are part of that number?
They're already in there, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. And then I guess my question would be for Mr. Campbell, which is, who from the city oversees the overseer?
Well, I mean, as far as, when it comes to the...
Well, I mean, as far as, when it comes to the, so similar to the Rex Center Roof project, Ms. Scruggs had the overall oversight upon the overseer, if you will. In this case, it would be, well, of course, we know Mr. Skoll is retiring soon, so it would be our staff in charge of the facility that would have oversight and the daily contact with the representative from Tetra Tech.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Oh, Mr. Tihar, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment, actually, on the public engagement aspect of this and just say, I believe that's a very, even though it's perhaps less time, a smaller percentage of the duties, during the Michigan Avenue construction project, Mr. Campbell sent out a weekly news blast or statement about progress on the project. And I think that public engagement aspect was very important for the public in that project. And I think similarly for this one, that will be a really important component, too. Not necessarily that that's solely Tetra Tech's bailiwick, but I think that we really need that in this project as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Additional questions? I'll jump to Ms. Mitchell and then Mr. Gierbaum.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just looking, going back to the assumptions that one of my peers brought up, so that the clause about the contractor, should the contractor's work run past this date, Tetra Tech may need additional funds to observe and administer the contract. And I guess this is more a question for our city manager. Is that liability of the cost of the overrun, is that covered by the contractor penalty?
That's my understanding. Similar, we did the same, you may recall, we had the same with the Rex Center Roof project, where that ran past, and the portion of liquidity damages that were charged paid for that increase from Maze Consulting to be there those additional days, and this would work similarly in that fashion.
I see. Thank you.
Nothing further, Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gierbaum?
Just a question, clarification for the city manager. When we hired the observation or the individual that oversaw the Rex Center, were they part of the design firm or were they independent of the?
They are employee of Maze.
So they were an employee of Maze?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Mr. Rubel, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing nothing further, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tihar, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan, to acknowledge receipt, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Mr. Skoll, thank you for your work on this as well. Next three items, Mr. Rubel will be taking the lead on, so Gary, you can hang tight. First up is 17-145, construction agreement amendments with D.N. Higgins Incorporated. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 11th, 2018 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel and to approve or not to approve the construction agreement amendments with D.N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $261,387 for projects outlined by City Superintendent Engineer Rubel's memo. Is there a motion?
Sorry. Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tihar. Mr. Rubel, would you care to briefly go over your memo, and then for the benefit of those in the audience and those who will be reading about this or listening at home, can you talk about some of the projects that this $261,000-plus initiative will be funding?
Thank you, Mayor. I summarized in the report to city council how we got here from the last meeting when we awarded the original contract. We had removed some work, and then the council asked to add some street work in lieu of what was a proposed park project, which now has turned into a proposed grant project for the future. So with the funds that were available from that, some of it from that, and then some we also had in both our major and local streets, we have found three street projects to add, and basically, if you put those together and all these four additions together, it comes out to the difference basically between the original contract award and what we had deducted from it. So this makes it whole again as far as the contractor is concerned. And so it doesn't really have an additional impact on the budget, other than we're spending funds that were available. The four projects that are being added, one, People's Park conversion of a tennis court to a parking lot, which had been before council, council directed staff to get the design finished and get a number from the contractor as an amendment. And so that is here at $66,780. And then, of course, Monroe Street, which we all know, we've been getting a number of complaints on, and as I expressed here, if we don't really fix it now, we are going to have some real disastrous problems because we're working on Phase Two and Three of Huntington Woods. So this will eliminate some real grief rest of the summer, basically, or fall. And then South Harris Street, as I mentioned, that's really the only leak in the downtown traffic circulation for major usage of traffic. All the rest are now finished because of, one, the US 12 project, and, two, because of what we did on Harris Street two years ago. And so that'll make a whole good transportation circulation route in the downtown area. And last Thursday, I went to Smoke 52, cars backed up, parked in all directions for about three blocks. It was very popular. So we're going to need that parking today. It's coming up. And then the last one being Barnes Court, that's a project, as you can see, was in the CIP for FY '19. It's going to remain there. And we actually are, on all three of these projects, we were able to contain the design funds into one amendment with the MCI contract, which is up next, and we didn't have to go through the process of detailed plans or bidding and then absorb those extra costs. So there's a little bit of savings on the engineering design process. So the Barnes Court is a Mill and Research project, and that actually works in good with our programming of next year industrial drive as a federal aid project, which is 80% funded. So that's where we come to with the $261,000 and the four added projects.
I appreciate your work on this, Mr. Rubel. These are critical investments into our infrastructure. In particular, as was noted earlier in tonight's meeting, many of us receive a number of complaints and inquiries about the status of the Monroe Street Bridge. So it's good that we can report back to our constituents that improvements are likely to transpire in the very near future. Are there questions for our city superintendent regarding this motion? Let me start, well, actually, let's just start at that end of the day. Let's work our way back towards the middle. We'll go, start with Mitchell, then McClellan and Gierbaum.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Rubel, the, I just want to double check. I get a lot of feedback from residents with concern about Monroe Street. There's a patch that is south of the bridge that's pretty rough, and this does fix that area. Is that correct?
Correct. It does all of the area that's within the city boundary, which is about almost 200 feet from the end of the bridge abutment. And then it's county right-of-way and under their jurisdiction for repairs. But it'll take care of all of the bad stuff. I did put a photograph there on page two, and the part you're talking about is right in the forefront of that photograph, and it's a lot of patches, a lot of cracks, and this will take care of the worst of the worst.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McClellan?
Yeah. My question is about Barnes Court. I guess I just see that there's a lot of other streets that are, where was the pecking order on that, that decision to do something with that particular piece of street because it doesn't really go anywhere, it doesn't, it's not a really high-traveled?
Yeah. It's, basically, a lot of it has to do with the deterioration state, and there are at least two users on that, the people that go down there for the U Store, go on there a little bit, and then, of course, Davco. But basically, it's because of, it's in the funding cycle for Tifa because it's in the industrial park area, and so Tifa only can do projects with the Tifa district when there's a funding cycle. And so it's basically the worst off of the ones we have in Tifa for industrial-type roads. And so it was on the CIP that was approved last year by council, and so it's there because of that also.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Gierbaum?
So that raises the question. And here, it indicates that that's being funded out of local streets, not Tifa, but why isn't it being funded out of the LFA? Because it's part of one of the industrial parks. Maybe Ms. Bennet can answer that question?
Excuse me, I made a mistake on that one.
Because I definitely don't want to be using local street money in that one.
You are very correct on that. I think the, that should be LFA Two and Major Street, I believe. Sorry about that.
Make that change without objection. Anything further, Mr. Gierbaum?
Excuse me, LFA One. Sorry.
I knew it was one of the LFA's. I just wanted to make sure that's where it was coming out, because we really shouldn't be using local streets if that funding is supposed to be available for that.
Right, correct.
There was something else about, no, I'm just glad that South Harris Street's under. I noticed that the other day, that that was really deteriorating, so good to have that under. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from this side of the day? It's Ms. Dillon, actually, both of you. So Ms. Dillon, then we'll end with Mayor Protem Tihar.
Thank you. Going back to Barnes Court, your memo indicates that it's federally funded for 81%. So is this $111,000 our portion of that?
No, it's industrial drive that's funded for, it's in conjunction. This will be done before we do industrial drive, but it'll work with it because the approach work is fundable. The approach work of Barnes Court will be in the industrial drive project. So we'll stop short of the stop bar on Barnes Court, and then the whole intersection ramps and pavement markings and stop sign will be federally funded. So we will save some money on Barnes Court with those federal aid funds.
Okay. I have to tell you, I really struggle with spending $111,000 on an industrial road that services a business and a half. Are there other roadways? I mean, it just seems like an ungodly, if you look at it in proportion to the other, to the other projects, it is significantly higher. And so I guess I'm just trying to figure out if, at this point, you know, that is the best use of resources, you know, financial resources. I guess I misunderstood. I'm sorry. I thought based on what you had written here, that we were looking at this project, that project being 81% federally funded.
Can I comment, Mr.? Sure. So to that end, the LFA dollars can only be used in LFA districts, and so utilizing LFA One dollars, because that's where Barnes Court is located, is in LFA One. So if we, even if we did, for instance, if decided to do a different street, if it's outside of the LFA One, then you wouldn't be able to use those, you'd have to use, find other dollars to do that project. So this is using LFA One dollars specific to the streets within the LFA One.
Are there other streets within the LFA One that would benefit?
No, because you have North Industrial, I'm trying to remember, it's part of Woodland in LFA One. I don't recall, but, I mean, Woodland is, you know, was redone, that portion of it that would be in LFA One if it was redone a few years ago. And North Industrial is in solid shape. I mean, part of it, I believe part of it's going to, for next year, as part of the, we're going to do all of South Industrial and then the southerly portion of North Industrial along with that project. So really, only a couple of streets within the LFA.
Tihar, I'll connect you.
Okay. Okay. And I just want to make one other statement because, before we get to vote, that I am still opposed to the conversion of the tennis courts, so I will not be voting for those.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Tihar?
So I had questions about Barnes Court, but they've been answered to my satisfaction. So, and I had one other not-so-substantive question, but I was intrigued by the, your mention of the salvage of the tennis court fencing. So what, can you talk a little bit more about that, like, so it gets salvaged and reused, recycled, repurposed?
Well, the, part of the park review concept with the Parks Commission, and I believe it was expressed city council also, was a plan to build a one-court tennis court, new, but the wider mesh is in very good condition, so that can be reused.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Gierbaum, I think you have one last question?
Yeah. In terms of Barnes Court, is there, is that where the new orthodontist is going to be opening up an office, too? Remember?
Kelly.
Kelly?
And Wood Duck Phase Four at the intersection of Campus Parkway and Industrial.
That's my mistake. Okay, thanks.
Last remaining lot there.
Okay. We aren't using any of this, surfacing of Barnes Court to help leverage our federal. Do we have any kind of match or anything for the federal, or is this just separate? Just curious.
For industrial drive?
Yeah.
That's budgeted, that would be budgeted, some of that's in, I believe, LFA. I could double-check with Joanne, but I'm sure our matches would be in the LFA, but that's in the next budget year, it's not in the FY '19. That would be FY '20.
I'm just trying to rationalize this. Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by Tihar to acknowledge receipt. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Your Honor. I guess I'm still confused about the funding, the different funding discussion and the LFA district. I'm just not clear. I'm sorry. Can you explain that one more time?
Sure. We can, to the mayor's suggestion, we can certainly provide you all of council a map of our, without getting too confusing, our tax increment finance areas. And so we actually have a tax increment finance authority, but then we have local development finance authorities, one and two, and those are typically for industrial or high-tech type uses. And those use tax increment financing, without getting too far into the detail, but to use those dollars, that's what, that's what those types of funds are used for, to be able to take the burden off, for instance, the general fund or your major local streets. And so as the value set a base year, and as the value grows, then you use that, those dollars. So if, we'll say the base year that was worth a million dollars of the properties within the district, then going forward, as those values grew and the taxes, those additional taxes then go into the LFA or the Tifa, and we're able to use those, capture those dollars. And it's not just city dollars. It's library, community college, county taxes, it's utilizing those tax dollars, capturing those tax dollars to go along with actual city taxes dollars and put them into, invest into infrastructure and projects and the like. And so in this particular case, LFA One, or Barnes, which Barnes Court is part of, those dollars would be going to pay for this project as opposed to street funds to do that, if that makes sense.
But those LFA One dollars, the LFA Two dollars, and then the Tifa dollars are spent making improvements within those geographic boundaries?
Yes.
And again, that's the map that I referenced earlier. We can provide you a hard copy and electronic copy of that.
Right. I hesitate, so I look at the map, and I really hesitate. As much as I want the Monroe Street property to get going, I hesitate to invest this, you know, I think of the Alaska Bridge to Nowhere. I feel like this is, I don't know if this is just a high priority. I'm not sure I have a full understanding of where else those dollars could be. So I'm, as much as I want to support this, I think tonight I can't because I just don't have a good understanding of where it can go and...
Well, as Mr. Campbell indicated, and we can certainly get you some background information, I know that staff would be delighted to sit down with you and talk further about this, but as it relates specifically to Barnes Court, so that's utilizing LFA dollars, there really aren't other projects currently within that geographic region that need those dollars. Mr. Gierbaum?
If I can comment. The only other option, what you could do with those dollars, and let Mickey Joe correct me, but I think she's left, would be to use it to pay off the debt that's on the, in the LFA. So you could turn off and use that funds, but it makes sense that those funds can only, are restricted to being used within that area. And the idea is, though, that the incremental tax dollars that we're getting are helping to pay off the debt at the same time. So you can build the fund balance and use it to pay off our debt early on that, or we can use it to improve the infrastructures that are within it so it doesn't fall apart and so that it looks attractive and all that type of stuff. The other issue is it could be used to help redevelop lots within the... The other issue is it could be used to help redevelop lots within the LDFA, number one, if it, if they were available, but right now there really aren't.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, the idea of paying off debt as opposed to a road that, you know, I don't know how much usage, I guess I just need more information before I could really support the inclusion of Barnes Court and with this project.
Okay.
Is there additional discussion on the motion?
Well, if I could add, there's, there actually is, uh, the Associated Springs property that was sold to American Soy. They depend on that road to, there's a drive not too far up the intersection there, that their main, uh, trucking, industrial use is off of this road. And as you can see, uh, this picture is two years old, it's much more worse than what appears in this picture, to drive it as far as, it'll, and once it starts to deteriorate rapidly, it's gonna be very expensive to keep patching it. But, uh, as American Soy is developing and expanding that site, they got a lot of heavy trucks going down here, at least halfway down Barnes Court. And so it would serve, uh, you know, our corporate citizens down there if they could have a, a road that they could, that serves, that is serviceable.
I'm sorry, why are we using a picture that's two years old? I mean, I just, I don't think that is relevant information on this application, and that could be very relevant, relevant information for us.
Anything further on the motion? No? Okay, well, it's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by Tahr to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands, who are the nays? So it's four in favor, two against, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Hang tight, Mr. Ruble, because you're up next with new business item seventeen dash one seventeen. This is professional services agreement amendment with MCI. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April eleventh, twenty eighteen memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to approve or not to approve the professional services agreement amendment with MCI in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to manage and construct the phase of add-on projects for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen street project program.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Do you want to briefly comment on your memo of, uh, Mc, no, I let Tahr be the second, I'm getting hyped up.
It's all right.
My apologies. Um, do you want to comment on your memo of, uh, April eleventh?
Well, just, uh, just to keep it brief, it represents the, the, uh, the design portion and the construction portion of the four add-on projects that got us here to this, uh, point where the contractor was able to give the prices on the measure just approved for the construction. And so this sees through the whole engineering process to the end, uh, till we accept the streets. And, uh, I, the totals are favorable because it, it only amounts to, uh, I believe, uh, less than ten percent engineering factor, which is very economical.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Ruble? Ms. Tahr?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I have a, a question about the funding source for the People's Park, the People's Park project. In, uh, this memo, uh, the funding source for the People's Park conversion is listed as general, but in the one we just approved is Tifa, so it's...
Correct, Mr. Campbell had caught her down the first one, but I, I forgot to change down this one too. It's, that one is Tifa. You are, you are correct on that.
Okay.
Change will be made without objection if that memo comes out fine.
The reason I said it was general because it's a general fund, Parks Project.
Yep. And put in the master file. Thank you, Ms. Tahr. Additional questions for Mr. Ruble? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Dillon?
I, I think Mr. Gierba just said it, just to clarify though, we're also changing the Barnes Court from local streets to FDIF.
Yep. That change will also be made without objection. If the amended copy could be placed in the master file, that would be terrific.
Thank you.
If there's no discussion on the motion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Tahr to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, the motion carries. Five in favor, one against. Uh, we move now to new business item, Mr., hang tight, Mr. Ruble, you're still up. Eighteen dash eighty-five, proposed ordinance number eight oh two, amending the term site condominium. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twelfth, twenty eighteen memo from Planning Commission, and to approve and adopt or not to approve ordinance number eight oh two, an ordinance to amend the Celine zoning ordinance by amending section two point, uh, zero two and adding new section two point zero three through two point zero eight to create a broader definition for the term site condominium.
Mr. Mayor, before a motion is made, I just have a suggestion to save you some backtracking, that the motion language end with section two point oh eight and not include the, to create a broader definition of the term site condominium, and I'll explain during discussion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curcio, that seems reasonable. Is there a mover in a second?
Still moved.
To acknowledge and to approve, Ms. McCallum?
Not to acknowledge and approve and adopt.
Yep. To approve and adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Mitchell.
Ms. Mitchell. Well, then before Mr. Ruble comments, I'll allow you, Mr. Curcio, to, uh, to comment on the rationale behind, um, subtracting that, 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 uh, the concluding language in the motion.
Sure, and I, I can probably just take the, the lead on that one, if that's, if this, okay, Mr. Ruble.
No problem, you wrote it.
Okay. So that, that language is not technically accurate, I think I see where it came from. In the memo, it does refer to a broader definition, but it's actually referring to the existing definition. So what this ordinance does is it narrows the definition of, um, site condominium, uh, to really more match its common understanding. So what a site condominium is, is a, a project that looks like a typical residential development, but is in the condo form of ownership. So it, as opposed to a, the more typical type of condominium, which is a single building divided into multiple units, a site condominium is a project that looks like a neighborhood, but each lot is actually a condo unit. That's what most people think of when they hear the term site condominium, that's not how it's been defined in the city's ordinance. And the practical, uh, consequence of that is that it triggers a, so site condominiums under the zoning ordinance traditionally require development agreements. So theoretically, you could have a, just, a condo that is just a, a single building and under the city zoning ordinance, a single commercial building, no less, and the city zoning ordinance could technically require a, um, a development agreement. And there's just no kind of practical need for that. I don't think it's really been done in the past, but it's just something that we caught in, uh, in looking through the ordinance. So, um, what this ordinance would do is it would specify that the, essentially, the development agreement requirement would only be triggered for those kind of large subdivision-like projects, and only for those that are not approved under the PUD ordinance. Because when they're approved under the PUD ordinance, the Planning Commission has the chance to impose the types of conditions that would normally be done through a development agreement, impose those through conditions of PUD approval. So that's, I guess it's kind of complicated ordinance considering it's only a paragraph long, and I'm happy to take any, any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio, and I will note, Mr. Gierba is welcome to comment on this. This is an item that, uh, has generated over the course of several meetings, some substantial and substantive discussion at the Planning Commission. So, uh, of course, it came to the Planning Commission, I believe it was approved unanimously at our most recent meeting. I think that group did some good work, and, uh, as Mr. Curcio alluded to, I think this is a positive change and moves us in the right direction. Mr. Gierba, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Not really, I mean, it is just a clarification, and, and it does reduce some of the complications of, as you mentioned, in terms of coming up with a development agreement when one really isn't necessarily needed. And, um, and when it's just a single building or a number of small units. We do have one development that, um, is gonna be a site condominium development, but it has more than five units, so that will be subject to a development agreement.
Mr. Ruble, anything you'd like to add?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Questions for city staff or legal counsel? Ms. Mitchell?
I'm sorry, could you, um, just clarify what language you're, you're changing to, to make it more accurate, please?
The motion ends with adding sections two point zero three through two point zero eight.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The word from two to condominium is struck.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Comments? No discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you both. Last action item of the evening is new business item eighteen dash eighty-seven, purchase of tasers. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April eleventh, twenty eighteen memo from Police Chief Hart, to approve or not to approve the purchase of eight tasers, X twos, from Axon in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, of which seventy-four, seven thousand four hundred and twenty-four would be covered by a grant, and to approve or not to approve, City Manager to sign Axon sale agreement in terms, conditions, upon review and approval by the City Attorney.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Chief Hart, the floor is yours.
Uh, very simply put, this is a ten-year funding program for a less lethal weapon that's a very important tool for our police officers to have at their disposal. Unfortunately, our current tasers expired in, in December before I took my oath. Uh, so this is a, a great program that TASER has, or Axon has put forward for us to, uh, fund these tasers for the next ten years. If, uh, by chance, the X two is a discontinued TASER, uh, five years from now, which we don't really anticipate that it will be, they're still making their X twenty-six from about twelve, fifteen years ago, um, then we would be afforded the opportunity to get the, the latest and greatest technology. So we're kind of funding tomorrow's technology, uh, over the next couple of years.
So very useful tool, a less than, than lethal option for our officers to have at their disposal. So thank you for your leadership, Mr. Gierba.
What do you do with the old ones? I know you indicated that they're out of warranty and not really covered any longer.
We receive the trade-in allowance for them, so that's already built into the price. And then I have to physically, um, destroy them, take pictures of them being destroyed in their destroyed state, sign a, a letter, and then send the pictures and the letter back to Axon so they're assured that it's, uh, that they are destroyed.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have any data as to how many times we've used the current TASER?
We use approximately once a year.
Okay.
Once a year. Uh, the last time would have been just after the first of the year. We had a, an EDP, emotionally deranged person that, uh, was presenting himself as a threat to officers and himself. The TASER was deployed, they were in a very close quarter situation, um, and due to that situation, the TA, the probes didn't quite make contact, um, fully, so the officers did have to go hands-on. So they're not a hundred percent, uh, foolproof, but they are a great tool. When I started twenty-seven years ago, it was every weekend we were in physical altercations with subjects, usually under the influence of something. And there were, you know, staff injuries or suspect injuries, you know, that we were then, uh, potentially liable for. So this is a great tool, just merely presenting sometimes the TASER, de-escalates the situation and the person will become compliant.
So have you taken the current tasers out of commission?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Um, yes, sir, thank you, Your Honor. Um, Chief Hart, thank you for, for the information you provided. Um, it took a couple tries, but, um, Ms. Royal got me a copy that I could read with the brochure information. Um, so I, I was looking at the brochure information and, um, it's from the company itself, from Axon, and they are also the ones from which we're gonna purchase these tasers if approved, is that right?
Correct.
So what I see, um, in their own brochure, it says this recommendation is not an expiration date, but for guidance only. And then, of course, they say, but, you know, you'll get liability insurance if you, if you have things that are older than five years. Do you have independent data aside from the manufacturer that says this should be replaced? That, that the new recommendations are closer?
No, I do not. We're relying on the manufacturer itself, and I know that in two thousand and sixteen, when they had this, this policy change, uh, left a lot of police departments kind of, you know, holding the bag, so to speak, because their tasers were older than five years. What I do know from my previous experience, um, in a department that had the tasers, is that the longer you go past that five-year mark, the more likely you are to have, uh, malfunctions and issues with it because it is an electronic weapon. So those electronic components, as you can imagine, you know, going in and out of the holster, now we're gonna be able to reuse our holsters, our DPPMs, which is actually the brains that goes in, that go into the handle of the TASER, that control it. So there are times where the longer you use them, pass that five-year mark, they do tend to break and TASER will not even work on them. So we would be looking at a full price replacement at that time, and then, of course, it would take time to come in.
I see, I guess I want to make sure it's not a case of, you know, I have somebody who wants to sell a fridge.
Sure.
And they say, I wanna sell you this fridge, by the way.
Yeah.
It needs replacing a lot sooner than originally.
Yeah. It's an important question. Uh, think of it as bulletproof vests, uh, they're replaced every five years, uh, not even an electronical, electronic component, uh, but just the daily wear and tear and, and, you know, the sweat, uh, from police officers. Uh, cell phones generally are replaced every two to three years, you know, our smartphones. Uh, so this is a, this weapon, uh, although less lethal, you know, it, it is electronic.
Sure.
So they do have to be replaced.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Additional questions for Chief Hart? Subsequent discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. None? How about reports or other announcements? So as it relates to an additional budget meeting, Councilwoman Mitchell, um, we had a great discussion tonight, but, um, it took a little bit longer than I had hoped. So Chief Hart will wrap up his presentation at our next meeting on April the thirtieth. Then we will hear from Director Fornes about the Department of Public Works, and then probably have an open discussion subsequent to that. Uh, assuming that we are unable to complete our work on the budget, then my recommendation would be to schedule a work meeting for either six or six-thirty on May the seventh.
I see, okay.
But of course, in the interim, if people have question, questions, if you request information, I would encourage you as, as, at your earliest convenience, to relay those to City Manager Campbell, either via phone call, face-to-face meeting, or, um, in the form of an email. Uh, other reports or announcements, Mr. Gierba?
Just announcement, Historical Society will be having a cleanup day at the farm on the twenty-eighth, Saturday, April twenty-eighth. Hopefully the weather will be warmer at that point. And I believe there's also scheduled that day, a cleanup downtown for Main Street. So if we're looking for volunteers, anybody to come out and help, uh, join us, then we'd appreciate it.
Sorry, I mean, I believe it's the twenty-first.
Oh, my mistake.
Holly, I don't mean, but, so the twenty-first of April is the downtown cleanup, is that correct?
Rentschler is the twenty-eight.
Rentschler is the twenty-eight, yes.
So you can do both. Other reports or announcements, Ms. Mitchell?
Um, just for the Historic District Commission, uh, we are moving ahead with a committee exploring, uh, expansion of our current historic district, so we're, we're excited to explore that possibility.
Very good. If there, oh, yes, Ms., uh, Mr. Hart?
Yes, sorry. Um, the, the, um, e-waste recycling event has now been scheduled, and I believe it's May fifth. Yes, thank you, Mr. Skoll. Um, and, uh, and it will be here at City Hall, it, uh, there, there is sponsorship, so there will be no cost to participate, but there will be the opportunity, um, as always, to make a donation in, uh, to the benefit of the Fifth Corner Teen Center. Um, so that's on May fifth. And then I would also, uh, note, in the, uh, annual report of the Environmental Commission, it was also announced that the Environmental Commission is sponsoring a shredding event in June. Um, that one does have a private sponsor, um, it's not cost-free, and it will be restricted to city residents. And I found out recently that in May, but I don't have the date for that, the, the library is also sponsoring a, a paper shredding event.
Very good.
So that, we'll have two opportunities for that.
Excellent.
Uh, other announcements, Ms. Dillon? Ms. Dillon?
Just a reminder that the Do It For Daniel documentary is Wednesday evening, April 18th, at 6:00 PM at the Celine High School.
Very good. Any other reports or announcements? And let's proceed to a wastewater treatment plan update. Mr. Skoll?
In the last two weeks, we had approximately four complaints, basically from two neighbors' adjacent properties. The Nova people were in last week to update the, to change the bearings, the wash arms, and the roller wheels, the support wheels for the units. Unfortunately, another issue came up. They plan on coming out and repairing, short-term, and they have a long-term fix for that. The disc that holds the screens have started to separate on one of the units. So, they plan on coming in and repairing those, and eventually, when they get them constructed, they'll bring in a new, the moving parts, basically replacing all the moving parts. Dan Loy, the president of the company, said he'd be willing to come up here and discuss the progress, or, I hope, with the council, when you would like them to be here.
I think that would be, maybe go ahead and schedule that.
Okay.
I think that would be beneficial.
Sure.
And we would probably have him present and discuss, and then address any questions or concerns that we may have at the beginning of our agenda. So, a normal presentation.
Okay.
Okay? And I did receive an additional, I can talk to you maybe tomorrow or maybe this week. I did receive an additional odor complaint today during my normal office hours.
Okay.
So, I can provide some insight later this week. Mr. Gearball?
Do you know any other installations where these filters have been used? Can we, I'd love to know where else they're in, and whether the cities are in the same part.
Well, I believe DeWajac, am I saying that correctly?
DeWajac.
Has the filters installed, and they've been having some issues as well, it appears. But Nova's been good at keeping on it, but this shouldn't be necessary at this point.
The only reason I'm asking is that if there's other communities, like I think this next issue that we're going to be talking about, we might gather together with them in terms of a potential action. Because, you might as well gather them all together while we're all suffering the same problem. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Skoll? Ms. Dillon?
I guess, you know, my standard question beyond whether the filters are working is, when are we going to explore other options at this point? I mean, it is just perpetual issues, and it's not one piece that they're having a difficulty with. It's everything about these filters. I just feel like we need to at least be exploring what other options we have, what the cost is going to be, what the timeframe is, and have a Plan B in place, because at some point, we are just going to have to pull the trigger and be done with these people.
That's, call is yours. We still have warranties on the Nova, but we don't want to let the warranty expire if we don't have something we can count on, which right now, we don't have anything we can count on.
Right. But, how much of your time, Mr. Skoll, is spent dealing with issues with these filters?
My personal time, not a ton of my personal time, but we did have, you know, we are getting into a season where the permit limits will be stricter. They're always, they tighten up in May for the summer season. We may have issues if those filters are not performing reliably then. Hopefully, that the corrections that Nova has offered will take care of the problem. In addition, they're installing a baffle system in each filter to ensure that the water does not become contaminated, and therefore, plugging the filter up that much quicker. Currently, the way the system works is the water goes through the screens, and it's collected in the bottom of the filter and flows out. Well, when it goes into a backwash cycle, that clean water that passes through the filter is used to clean the filter. It pumps, it draws water from the reservoir at the bottom to clean the filters. Unfortunately, if you have a momentary spike in flow, those filters will overflow for the moment, and that untreated, unfiltered water will get down into clean water and then plug up the washwater pump, causing shorter filter runs. So, they came up with a baffle. I'm not sure the exact design. I have not seen it yet. They plan on installing that this month, when they come up to do the temporary repairs. Hopefully, that will ensure that the water that's used to wash the filters is not contaminated, and therefore, the filter runs will be longer and more reliable.
Thank you. I guess, I just have one follow-up question, and it would be to Mr. Campbell, which is, then, what action do we need to take to start exploring other options?
Well, we can certainly, we can reach out to DeWajac to talk to them. We can sit down with Tetra Tech. I've reached out to City Attorney Scott Smith already a little bit, so we can certainly reach out to those resources and try and develop a Plan B. I mean, I certainly don't disagree. We have the same frustrations, and we talked about this, the repairs. Now, we went from basically repairs to almost a rebuild. Is that correct? I mean, with...
Well, they're going to repair the seams on the individual discs that are separating. These discs, when they were constructed, are, they're glued like on epoxy finish, and then they're riveted to hold the seams together until the glue cures, but the rivets are still there. For some reason, the glue is separate, the ends are separating, and what that allows is water, sorry, untreated water to go exit the filter without being filtered, and that also shortens the filter times.
Right, but I thought I recall, in addition to, they had, a couple months ago, they had said, "Hey, we need to replace the, we want to come in and replace the wheels," and there was one other item. And then, as you said recently, the discs themselves, was it solely the discs in addition, or was there other?
Excuse me?
Was it solely the discs?
Yes.
So, when they come back and repair the discs and the wheels, and I can't remember the other item.
Well, the wheels, like I said, the wheels were replaced last week, along with the seals on the bearings. They brought in a lubricated bearing versus the sealed bearings that they had before. They discovered that the sealed bearings were sealed improperly, and it was causing water to wick into the bearings, which shortened the bearing life. But they did all that last week, and that's when I pointed out the issue with the disc on only one unit, but they're going to replace all of them.
Why don't you do your background, talk to Tetra Tech, and perhaps reach out to other communities who have utilized this technology? And, Mr. Skoll, if you would please relay to your counterpart at Nova that we would like a representative to come to council in the very near future to provide us an update.
Sure.
And subsequent to that, I think we will actively consider what the prudent course of action would be. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
One request. Could we have the timeline of all of these repairs since this all started?
Can you provide that information?
I can.
Okay. Yep, very good. Just make sure it's in our next council package.
Timeline and inventory of what they did. I would like to know what they did, because that's going to build our case.
Well, actually, 90% of the repairs have been to the roller wheels that support the inner workings, and they upgraded them last week with wheels that are approximately four inches wide versus the two-inch-wide ones, in order to disperse the weight a little bit more.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Skoll. Okay, moving on. Food truck ordinance, and I'm just going to level with you folks. I am really eager to get something done on this issue, and so, it is my goal to have this come back as an action item in, at our first meeting in May, and hopefully, receive approval. So, tonight, I'm trying to identify what outstanding questions and concerns there are, and I want to note that we're all going to probably have to give a little bit on this. We're not going to be able to develop an ordinance that is perfect to everyone on the dais, but I want to get to a point where it is good enough for a majority to accept. So, I will open it up for your questions and comments, and again, my goal is to craft something that can be discussed, debated, and hopefully implemented our next meeting. Mr. Gearball?
My concern is just to defend private property rights. So, as long as it defends that uptown, I don't have a problem with it. I don't believe that we should prevent owners of property uptown from not being able to utilize their property.
Okay. Ms. McClellan?
Same.
Same. Ms. Mitchell?
So, and just specifically, the clauses that described parking restrictions, I mean, I don't feel comfortable having restrictions on private business other than to say waste receptacles. That's the only thing that I can think of, but it just seems like an overreach, and I, the nod to downtown businesses is that we're not allowing them all the time on city property. So, we have, you know, we have acknowledged their concern, but there are some personal property rights that are rightfully concerned as well.
Okay, Mr. Hart?
Could I ask a question, Mr. Curcio?
Absolutely.
So, in the most recent draft that we saw, the, there were restrictions about blocking parking spaces. Can we, so, does that apply to every parking lot, whether it's privately owned by a business or owned by a church? Or is that, where did that come from, and what does it mean?
So, those provisions, and I believe you're referring to Section 3 in the zoning ordinance, Section 5.1, sorry, 5.18, that would only apply in the D1 and D2, but they would apply to all private lots in the D1 and D2. And my understanding, and I wasn't at this meeting, I thought that that was actually a request of council. There was concern with some, with spillover effects in the downtown parking. It sounds like there's a number of council members who are not on board with those restrictions, and we're certainly happy to revisit them anyway, if you would like to, from a policy perspective.
Okay.
Please continue.
Yes, and so, I guess, I wouldn't necessarily want to impose restrictions on how a private parking lot uses its spaces, I think. But I do, but there were also some provisions, I think, related to accessibility to the food truck itself, and I guess I would like to see some provisions or some rules about accessibility remain in some way.
Right. So, I think that at least our understanding, when we drafted this language, and it may not actually track with reality, was that parking downtown can be tight at times, and the idea was, if you're, if you have a large parking lot or a large paved area, then you can, you certainly can put them in any configuration that you want, but what this language does is if you're, if your parking lot is basically the minimum, the minimum of what is required under the zoning ordinance, then you would not be able to take up two of your parking spaces, which is basically what it would take to put a food truck in with the kind of minimal amount of area around the window. You'd be effectively losing two parking spaces. So, the idea was, you'd have to have at least, you know, two extra spaces in order to do this. That may not, that may not be a workable solution, because in the D1 district, my understanding is that there actually is no parking requirement in a lot of, for a lot of D1 properties, because as long as you're zoning, if you are used, the zoning ordinance would require less than 25 spaces, then you're completely exempt from providing any spaces. So, and that formula in this ordinance just wouldn't apply to those properties at all. So, this is something that may need to be revisited, but the basic concept is, if you're putting a food truck into an ordinance, it's not only taking up the space, sorry, if you're putting a food truck into a parking lot, it's not only taking up the space where it's actually located, but it's also effectively taking up, you know, the window space around that one additional space. So, if you're not concerned with the effects of spillover parking, we can just strip out these provisions entirely. If some other solution comes to mind, we can try to put language around that.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Hart?
No, I remain concerned about ensuring accessibility and safety of pedestrians around the, around the food truck.
Okay. Ms. Dillon?
I actually have a question for Celine Mainstreet.
Holly, you want to come to the podium?
So, thank you very much for providing your memo. I just, my question is very quick. It is, did you speak to business owners beyond restaurants?
Yes, actually, I did. And most of the rest, the retail and food service businesses are actually in support of adding vitality to the commercial environment downtown, and increasing that and diversifying the economic base. So, there is definitely, as Mayor Marl said, we're not going to please everybody. I think that what's important to the restaurants is that they're, I think a lot of them are also in support of food trucks coming downtown, but there is just the concern that we prioritize, we make some rules around the food trucks so that they don't interfere with their business and their ability to do business. And so, I think a lot of what you guys put together, the amendments to Ordinance 798, answered to a lot of their concerns, and, you know, we'll just, we'll just go with the flow. But I think personally, food trucks will add a lot of vitality to the outdoors. We just, we just have to try to make sure that when we bring food trucks in, they're not going to take away from their customer base.
Thank you very much.
Well, here's my opinion, and I believe it reflects the majority of those present. It's been noted by Attorney Curcio, and I think Mr. Gearball has mentioned this in the past, that we place less restrictions on parking on our downtown as a reflection of the fact that there isn't ample space. So, I am in favor of allowing private property owners downtown to have food trucks with minimal restrictions. I do want to reserve public parking for individuals who are patronizing our small businesses and restaurants. I think it would be improper to allow food trucks on municipal lots in our downtown. But if it's on your, if it's on a parking lot that's owned by an individual or a private enterprise, I'm comfortable with that. So, I would perhaps make some modifications to the, to the proposed ordinance, Mr. Curcio, and under those conditions, I would be an affirmative vote. Would that also reflect the sentiments of my colleagues? Mr. Gearball, yes? Ms. McClellan?
Yep.
Yeah? Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Mr. Hart, would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yes, did you have some?
I just have one other comment, maybe for Holly, but it was my understanding that the memo that you sent, the restaurant, the downtown restaurants were more concerned, it seemed to me at least, from reading, that the downtown restaurants were more concerned about food trucks at events, not necessarily at, just if somebody wanted to have one in Key Bank parking lot. Is that correct, or was I reading that wrong?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're more...
Because they were kind of like looking for promotional treatment at events versus having food trucks come in. That's a separate issue, maybe, and we can talk about it later, but...
Right. I think that when it comes to events, in certain events, they want to be, if they're, they want to be given first dibs if there are certain areas. So, for instance, if we have a restaurant week or something like that, they want to be given first dibs on areas where they can maybe be outside and be part of the event. But I think that they're in support of, like, for instance, Oktoberfest, when the demand for food would outweigh our stock of restaurants. But in, also in that situation, they should be given first dibs if they want to be outside in participating in that event as well. I think it's just, you know, communication and knowing how they want to participate in events, and making sure that they're consulted about that in the planning.
Right. Which I think, you know, I have no issue with that, but I feel like that's a separate issue from the food truck ordinance, and maybe I'm wrong, but I see the food truck ordinance as more of if someone wants to come in just on a business basis.
Correct.
Versus coming in, an event is covered under the community events policies. Is that correct? So...
They are two separate issues.
Two separate things, okay.
It does. It's just like an opportunity for them to get their voice in there.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Let's do this. Mr. Curcio, working with the city manager, it appears that there needs to be some small revisions to the latest draft. The sooner that those could be made, the better, because I would like to email that to my council colleagues well in advance of our next meeting to get any feedback, in the hopes that what's presented and discussed and hopefully approved at our next meeting is very clear to everyone. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Okay. Very good. Last up, Mr. Campbell, I think you were the one who added this to the discussion portion of the agenda. Do you want to provide a brief comment on national big-box realtors?
I'll do my best. So, as you can see, we have a letter of request from the City of Escanaba. Those of you may be familiar with the dark stores, the big boxes that, basically, they put all these deed restrictions when they're, when they are selling a vacant building, right? So, in this particular case, it's Menards, and so, in the City of Escanaba, they moved out of the buildings to become vacant, but they deed restricted for such things, anything that would compete with them can't go in there. And then, of course, they claim that it devalues their property, so their assessment should be lowered, and I certainly brought Catherine Scholar, City Assessor, to answer any detailed questions, but, but as you can see from the letter, they have incurred a lot of legal expense. It's gone to the Supreme Court. It's coming back to be litigated again. While we don't have any big boxes per se, as Catherine will tell you, this could have an impact on all sorts of commercial and industrial-type buildings. And so, they're requesting municipalities from all over the state to assist in this, because at some point, we're going to be impacted by it. And so, their request would be somewhere in the range of between $500 and $1,000 to help towards, or whatever, for that matter, but that's kind of what dates the example that the city manager from Escanaba provided, to help and assist with the legal costs.
Ms. Skoll, do you care to make any additional comments?
Mr. Campbell gave a real good description of the case at hand. This, the tribunal likes to use vacant properties that are available for sale as far as when they're reviewing a tribunal case and looking at appraisals that are brought before them. The problem occurs that a lot of these vacant and available, or now kind of coined dark store, buildings have deed restrictions on them that prohibit the property to be sold to another competing...
sold to another competing use. You've, you know, probably driven somewhere where you've seen one store and, and maybe a, a newer version of a store that closed maybe a mile down the road. And that closed dark store is available for sale, but it, it can't be sold for anything that would be a competing use. And in the Menards case, a number of the tribunal, the comparable, the comparable sales that were used were actually dark stores that had deed restrictions on them. And so it, it creates a, a reduced value. It, it further pushes values down. And it's not just related to the big stores, big box stores. In this case, it was Menards. But I've personally experienced it in trying to defend some of our smaller business values here. Some of our fast food restaurants or other kind of national retailers, it's, it's commonplace. In fact, the Costco store in Pittsfield currently is on, has a tribunal appeal, and both Pittsfield Township and Costco have agreed to hold that case in abeyance pending the outcome of this decision. So it's an important decision for, for all of the communities and the retailers and other taxpayers in general. So just, you know, worthy for some, some good thought behind it and good resources.
There are questions off the bat for either our city manager or city assessor? No? Is there interest in supporting this initiative? We'll start with you, Ms. Mitchell?
So, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Scholl. There's an excellent report from NPR on this issue. And it, it doesn't seem like it's kind of in our backyard, but you know, just as our mayor has, has alluded to a lack of leadership, there is a lack of leadership to address this issue. And once again, we are faced with a local solution. I do think this impacts us. I would be in support of, of sending some funds towards this effort. I'm eager to hear my council members' thoughts.
Okay. So supportive of some level of funding, Ms. McClellan?
I mean, I guess, I think it's an important issue. I'm not sure that, I don't, I don't know how, I guess it would depend on how much of the funds and what, where they were coming from.
Okay.
If I was in support.
Mr. Gearbox?
I'm in sort, because we did something similar with our DTE lighting, and if we had not done that, we would not have gotten ourself a benefit of that. I think this is the only approach we're going to do in terms of local government fighting back against big business and inept, and inept state legislatures.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, I'm in favor. I'm, I think the, the, the argument that the large corporation has very, very deep pockets, and, and local government doesn't. So I think this is important to us, too. So I, I believe it would be good to support it.
Ms. Dillon?
Yes, I would be in favor of supporting it.
But here's my suggestion, because obviously, whatever amount we give is, is more symbolic than anything else. But symbolism is important. We're a small municipality, so I would throw a number of maybe 200 to 500. How does, how does, how does council feel about that? Ms. Mitchell?
I would support at least 500.
500, okay.
I'd be in favor of that, yeah. I think it's, again, I don't think we're going to really put much of a dent in any kind of monies that are coming at us on the other end. So, but it's symbolic.
Okay. So would you be comfortable with 500?
Yeah.
Mr. Gearbox?
Definitely.
500? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
500 bucks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And Ms. Scholl, thank you for your analysis as well. We come now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make common requests to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any citizen comments? Please note upcoming meetings, we will have a work meeting to discuss the 2018, 2019 budget on April 30th, and then regular meetings on the 7th and 21st. We already excuse the absence of councilman CEO, so at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:50 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbox. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Dillon. Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. It was a good meeting. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.